This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the January 17th, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening, and I would also like to extend a welcome to our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Chris Peichel, who was sworn in last Friday, January 5th, to fill the vacant term of David Kennedy, who had resigned. So we welcome you to the board. At this time, I'd like to ask you all to please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I will ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and then may proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor, is there any member of the public who'd like to address the board on any non-agenda items? Anyone here? Is there anyone online? No one online. We had expected County Executive Phil Armstrong to speak during courtesy, and he's not here.
Correct.
So we'll move on, and if he does arrive, we'll make an opportunity for him to speak. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, we have approval of our meeting minutes. There are four sets that have been distributed to the board for your review. I'll go through them one at a time. December 20th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have our December 28th, 2023 Board of Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes. Any comments or questions? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions. Very good. So we have three ayes and two abstentions. Our January 2nd, 2024 Board of Commissioners Reorganization Meeting Minutes. Comments or questions? I need a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions. One abstention, thank you. Our January 10th, 2024 Vacancy Board Meeting Minutes. Any questions from the board? I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention, thank you. Agenda Item 6A, Ordinances. We have advertised for possible adoption and ordinance amending Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 17, to repeal Article 7 Environmental Advisory Council and its subordinate sections, reserved for future use, those sections not utilized, and create a new Article 5 Environmental Advisory Council as part of the codified ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall, and providing for the Commission's name, membership, jurisdiction, duties and responsibilities, rights and authority, organization, bylaws and procedures, public notice of meetings, funding and expenditures, records, compensation, severability, failure to enforce not a waiver, repealer and an effective date, and amending Part 2 General Legislation to repeal Chapter 85 Air Pollution and its subordinate section. I'll call on our long-range planner, Chris Stroller, to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, and thank you for reading the subject line. Saved me some time here. To recap for our newer commissioners, essentially what we're doing here out of the comprehensive plan last year, we identified the need to kind of clean up and reorganize some of the pieces of our volunteer boards and commissions. Specifically, we looked at the three council boards, what have you, that are related to environmental topics. Those would be the Green Advisory Council, which was established by Resolution in 2019, the Environmental Advisory Council, established by ordinance in 1974, and the Air Pollution Board, established by ordinance in 1976. Over the past several months, we've gone through and have looked at cleaning these up and have prepared a new ordinance to combine all the duties of these boards moving forward with a new Environmental Advisory Council. The ordinance is in front of you. At the December 21st, 2023 meeting, or I'm sorry, at the December 6th, 2023 meeting, the board directed staff to advertise this draft ordinance for the possible adoption. In December, this ordinance was forwarded to the Lehigh County Department of Law, and it was advertised in the Lehigh Valley Press on January 3rd. The ordinance is presented in front of you, and staff is recommending the adoption of this ordinance for a new Environmental Advisory Council.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. I just had one question. This has been advertised. Has there been any response from the public? Any questions on this ordinance?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know if there's been any.
Okay, very good. I'll open up to the board. Are there any comments or questions on this ordinance? Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B, Advertise for Possible Adoption and Ordinance Amending Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 17, to repeal Article 3 Landscape and Shade Tree Commission and its subordinate sections, reserved for future use, those sections not utilized, move Article 5 Commission Meetings to Article 3, move Section 17-29 to Section 17-14, and create a new Article 7 Landscape and Shade Tree Commission as part of the codified ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall, and providing for the Commission's name, membership, jurisdiction, duties and responsibilities, right and authority, organization, bylaws and procedures, public notice of meetings, funding and expenditures, records and compensation, severability, failure to enforce not a waiver, repealer and an effective date. And I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. This is the second of the ordinances proposed tonight, doing similar things. This is to do for Landscape and Shade Tree what the prior ordinance proposed to do for the EAC. This is also a two-part ordinance, the second ordinance to follow, because this deals with the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, Article 3 of Chapter 17. That's the current ordinance, and that ordinance combines both the functioning of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission with the administration of trees within the right-of-way. So what staff decided to do after coming out of comprehensive plan was to look at that, and we decided the best thing to do would be to break them apart, create one ordinance which governs the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission and its functions, and another ordinance to govern the administration of trees within the rights-of-way. So this is the former of those two. As Chris noted, you had seen this before. I believe the first time you saw this ordinance was September 20th, 2023, and then you saw it again on December 6th, 2023, when you recommended advertising for possible adoption. Basically, what this does, and President Kelly went over the details of what each section within does, but as I said, this primarily is to codify the functions of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission and replace the existing ordinance with this one. And I do note that this one should be passed at the same time as the following one, Chapter 330 Trees, because they both replace the current Article 3. So otherwise, unless you have any questions regarding this, December 21st, 2023, this ordinance was forwarded to the Lehigh County Department of Law, and on January 3rd, 2024, this ordinance was advertised in the Lehigh Valley Press for possible adoption.
Very good. Thank you, Greg. Same question. Has the Township received any feedback from the advertisement of this ordinance?
Not to my knowledge, no.
None. Okay. I have a motion to approve the ordinance.
Just have a question. I was reading through this, and there's a place where they can appeal. And I don't know if it's, I forget if it's this one or the next one, but since you put them all together, we're bringing up now before you decide on it. If you have an appeal, it goes back to the Shade Tree Commission, who made the original decision. So the Shade Tree Commission makes a decision. I want to appeal it. The appeal goes back to the people who made the first negative decision for that person. It just didn't seem to make sense that we're going to appeal back to the people who made the original decision. What would I expect different?
Actually, that's incorrect. The people who make the decision will be staff. There will be, and this is in the following ordinance, Chapter 330 Trees. What we do is we take the current job of this Landscape and Shade Tree, which is to actually review every permit as it comes in, and make the decision. What we're going to do is assign that job to a Shade Tree Coordinator on staff, who will then make that decision. The Shade Tree Commission then acts as the appeals board for the staff members' decisions. So you are not returning a decision to the people who made it. You are actually, much like the zoning hearing board or the billing code appeals board, staff makes the decision, and then, if appealed, it goes to the appealing board, which will be the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. They still, they will still review all landscaping plans.
Okay.
The appeal, the appeals process is strictly for shade tree permits.
Any further discussion from the board? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. And then the coordinating ordinance, Agenda Item 6C, Advertise for Possible Adoption and Ordinance Amending Part 2 General Legislation as Establishing Chapter 330 Trees as Part of the Codified Ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall, and Providing for Definitions, Permits, Prohibited Activities, Trees and Public Lands, and Right-of-Way Trees on Private Property, Arbicultural Work Performance Requirements, Compliance with Township Ordinances, Shade Tree Fees, Violations and Penalties, Severability, Failure to Enforce Not a Waiver, Repealer and an Effective Date. Greg, will you present this one as well?
Yes. This is the second half of this pair of ordinances, which we have discussed. President Kelly kind of went over all of the sections at a higher level. This is similar to the other one, wherein you saw this December 6th meeting and recommended it for advertising for adoption. December 21st, 2023, it was forwarded to the Lehigh County Department of Law. It was advertised in Lehigh Valley Press on January 3rd, 2024. And I do want to make the point that currently, we do have a South Whitehall Township Shade Tree Ordinances Policy and Guide. It's a plain English guide for residents to use. That will have to be updated after we pass this ordinance. We will be bringing that back to you. That will be adopted by Resolution sometime in the near future. So if you have any questions, more questions regarding Chapter 330, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Very good, Greg. Thank you. I'll open up to the board if there's any questions on this ordinance.
I'll wait till the resolution comes up, because people that want to plant trees in the right-of-way usually goes into their yard that they take care of, and they end up putting it in the right-of-way. There'll be a list of trees that they can use and so forth and so on.
Yes, and that's one of the things we're going to really examine, is, you know, we're looking at more native species that do well here, and stuff that does well along a street right-of-way, resistant to salt and the like. So we're going to examine that fairly carefully.
And one of the issues that we've heard from some residents is the street trees that raise the sidewalk. So will that also be addressed in this?
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of the surface rooters. They lift sidewalks, they destroy driveways. Not a good thing. We've been trying to weed them out over the decades, but of course, like many trees, you plant them 20 years ago, you find out 20 years later that they do nasty things. So we're learning from experience.
Excellent. Very good. Any further board questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make.
I have a second. Second. Motion is second. No further discussion from the board. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Then Item 6D for Discussion Only, 457B Ordinance Amendment. I'll ask Township Manager Tom Petrucci to present.
Thank you. So in 2023, the Police Department Union representatives had inquired whether it would be possible to allow for alternate plan managers for the Township's 457B Deferred Compensation Plan. Currently, the Township has two approved investment managers for the plan. So this is the plan that's voluntary, that is offered by the Township in which eligible plan participants, employees of the Township, whether union or non-union, can make contributions that are not matched by the Township. And the Township also has no administrative costs associated with this plan. It does allow for pre-tax deductions. So upon reviewing the existing plan documents, as well as the ordinance, we noted it was not updated since 1993, and that the plan documents were put together by the investment managers. So we felt that the plan needs to be specific to the Township, not provided by an investment manager, that it should allow for additional investment managers to be approved by the Township in conjunction with the Pension Committee, and to revise the ordinance that incorporates the new plan document by reference, and that it provides clear and concise guidance to Township officials that is compliant with relevant IRS regulations. So working with Eckert Siemens, the pension and labor consultant attorney, we have developed a plan that you see in front of you. The next step in this process would be to refer it to the Pension Committee, especially given the fact that the Pension Committee has actions that are articulated within the plan document. So with that, I would ask, unless there's any questions this evening, to move it to the Pension Committee, which is scheduled for one week from now at 10:00 a.m.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I'll open it up to the board if there are any comments or questions.
I do have a question. I'm sorry. I was just wondering if this now will open it up. Is there one particular company to manage that we're looking at, or is, will this be a multitude of companies? Anyone can actually?
It could be a multitude. There was one in particular that the pension, I'm sorry, that the police union had identified as having very positive results for law enforcement officers, again noting that any employee can participate. It's their funds. You know, it's not Township funds. But yeah, the important part of this is that the Pension Committee will vet out the investment managers that we select. But yeah, it would be open to any investment managers that the Township deems appropriate.
Okay, so it's basically a, I'm sorry, I'm not used to looking this way with the mic over here. It's a difference in management, not necessarily diversity of a portfolio. It's not going to affect that. It's management.
Well, the diversity of the portfolio is selected by the employees themselves. So it would be really, you know, based on that employee working with the fund manager to put in a plan that meets their needs, whether it's, you know, more short-term or long-term, you know. Again, it doesn't incur liability on the Township. So if it were a pension plan, a traditional pension plan, defined benefit or defined contribution, the Township would have to perform actuarial analysis to make sure that, you know, the plan changes are in conjunction with state law. That's not applicable here, because it's all personal funds.
Okay, thank you. And you actually answered another one of my questions, because I didn't know if employees did have the opportunity to choose, or if they could just say, I want to go more conservative, or, you know, give me a couple volatile ones. You know, I didn't know that they could actually pick the ones that they want.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, the needs of the employee. I mean, I don't know that anyone gets down to the granular level of saying, you know, I want so many shares of this, but, you know, so, but you do get to the point of, you know, looking at the funds and having the data to make sure that, you know, you, whether you're, to meet your own retirement goals.
Thank you.
And this was a rank-and-file request, I take it?
I'm sorry?
This was a rank-and-file request.
From the unions, yes. Yeah, not from the command staff. Well, not from, not from that, yeah.
They still have the drop program.
For the police pension plan, yes. Only the police pension plan, not applicable to this.
Okay.
And I just had one follow-up question. Thank you for that explanation. I understand other departments have pensions as well that would be affected by this. Is it Public Works also that would be?
Well, yeah, to clarify, this was stemming from the police union as a request, and it would be any employee that is eligible, so essentially a full-time employee, you know, or I should say, a regular employee of the Township. So with non-union, union, police, public works, administrative, doesn't matter.
Very good. Thank you. Forward questions? Do you, we have a motion to move this forward to the Pension Committee for review and comment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 6E for Discussion Only, On-Lot Septic Disposal Systems Ordinance, and turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart.
So this is a on-lot sewage disposal ordinance that the Township does not have our own ordinance in our codified ordinances. Every year, we typically will go through our fee schedule, our permitting process. One of the things that came up during that review is our sewage enforcement, septic permits, and kind of cleaning up and making those permits clearer, incorporating the SEO fees into the fee schedule. If you notice, when you adopted the fee schedule, there was an attachment that had all of those fees. So during that process, we started looking at other things that were related to the sewage enforcement. And we had meetings with the SEO, and he pointed out that we should really have this ordinance. So we worked with the sewage enforcement officer to get some model ordinances, and that's really what this is based off of. And we're looking to send this to legal to move it on to the next step.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open up to the board if there are any comments or questions.
I do have a question, President Kelly. It was mentioned in the documents about Township Sewage Officer. Would that be someone in-house, or somebody appointed, or someone third party?
Yeah, it's a third-party appointment. It's currently Chris Knoll with Keystone Consulting Engineers, and there's an alternate. I apologize, I forget who the alternate is, but, so we've been working closely with Chris. He's been the SEO for the Township for quite some time. So it's a third party.
He takes care of repairs, too, and all that?
Yes, so any, any septic permit, we have repairs, new systems, and then testing was one of the things we added to the permits.
Perks.
Yeah, perk tests. Yep.
My only question is, just out of curiosity, in the memo, it talks about how current sewage enforcement officers have been using the state regulations rather than municipal ordinances. Is it more common for municipalities to have their own ordinance, or does, do they, do most municipalities just follow the state guidelines and?
It's essentially the state guidelines, but it really should be adopted by the Township. And when he is citing a code, he cites the state regs instead of the Township ordinance. So this would, he would start citing the Township ordinance.
Very good. Are no other comments? Do I have a motion to send the proposed ordinance to legal for review?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I do have, actually, just one question. Is there a period of time after which you would go through the ordinance and make sure it's up to date with current state regulations? I'm not sure how often they change on this subject, but just to make sure we're always in compliance with the state.
Yeah, and usually, I mean, we'll get bulletins as things are changes, changes to the regulations, and also relying on the sewage enforcement officer, because they're, deal with it every day. So they'll be aware of the changes, and they'll make recommendations. And that's kind of where this came from, was a recommendation from, from the SEO.
Question, I'm sorry. How long is the permit going to be good for when we do the perks? Are we going to go by the state, or?
So we're following state regs. So whatever the state regulations are, I'm not first in.
I mean, someone pulls a permit today and doesn't do anything for five, six years.
Right. There's a certain, yeah, my understanding that the perk test is good indefinitely.
That's what I was told. I'm not sure.
That's my understanding.
Does the sewage enforcement, does he do any random inspections of systems?
He doesn't do random. So if there are, if there's a request for investigation, is when he'll go out and look. One of the things that we've talked about, the 537 Plan, one of the provisions in the full 537 Plan is to look for areas of failing septics. So when we get to that point, or we start tackling the full plan, we'll engage the SEO to kind of review his records and see where, if there's a concentrated area of failing septics. So he, to answer, no, he doesn't randomly check. If he gets a request, he'll go check, but he may start checking when, as part of the 537 process.
Now, I want to add thing to, one more thing to what I said that's very important. If you conduct the perk test, and then you compact the soil and stirb the soil, then that permit is no longer valid.
No further board discussion. Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Resolutions. 7A, we have a resolution appointing two commissioners to the South Whitehall Township Pension Committee. I'll open it up to the board if there is a, here. Anything, Tommy, you want to add before we do the?
I could just provide an overview of what the Pension Committee does.
Very good.
So it's officially organized by the Board of Commissioners in accordance with Chapter 58 Pension Plans, and is responsible for the administration of the Township's pension plans in conjunction with the Township Manager, Director of Finance, Pension Plan Investment Managers, Pension Plan Actuary, Pension Plan Solicitor, and includes the Employee Thrift Savings Plan, the 457B Deferred Compensation Plan, as discussed earlier, the Office Personnel Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Pension Plan, the Police Defined Benefit Pension Plan, the Public Works Defined Benefit Pension Plan, and the Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Pension Plan. So your responsibilities would include the review of funding and actuarial requirements for the pension plans, review of investment plan structure, review of actual investment results, and ensuring that all reports are filed in accordance with common wealth requirements. As well, is providing insight into the efficient administration of the pension plans in order to make recommendations to Township leadership. So the meeting schedule is generally quarterly. The next meeting is next week at 10:00 a.m., next Wednesday, and then April 24th, July 24th, October 23rd. And they are all public meetings, as advertised.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Do I have any volunteers to serve on the Pension Committee? Okay. I will nominate Tommy John. So do I have a motion to approve said resolution appointing Thomas Johns to the South Whitehall Pension Committee?
So moved.
I'll second. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Then Item 7B is a second resolution for a second commissioner to be appointed to the Pension Committee. Is there someone willing to serve in this capacity? I would be happy to if. I would be happy to if.
Wednesdays are not a good day.
I, I'll be happy to do that if. An agreement? Hey, do I have a motion to approve said resolution appointing Commissioner Kelly to the Southway Health Township Pension Committee?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And item seven C, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Health Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, reappointing Diana Valkova to, as the Deputy Treasurer for the Township pursuant to Article 8A, Section 801AC of the First Class Township Code. Tom, would you present this agenda item?
Yes, um, so this is actually a first-class Township Code requirement. Um, and, um, I will note that Deanna has served in this role, uh, for the past approximate year, and that she has, uh, obtained the necessary surety bond. So I would seek to, uh, to, to keep the current arrangement essentially in effect.
Excellent. Uh, appreciate her willingness to serve in this role again. Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Here's my new, newness. Is she a township employee or is she a third party?
She is a township employee. She's the payroll coordinator.
Further questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further comment? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then item seven D, we have a resolution reappointing Patrick M. Hitchens, Esquire, as Special Tax Counsel for Southway Health Township's Business Privilege Tax Collection and Establishing Compensation. Um, if you would present this agenda item?
Thank you. Um, so anytime that the board appoints a legal counsel of any kind, a resolution is required pursuant to the First Class Township Code. In this case, uh, we are seeking appointment of, um, Patrick Hitchens for the purpose of mainly, uh, discussing, providing legal advice for business privilege tax and Act 511 tax members following under the, uh, the Local Tax Enabling Act. Um, so, in dealing with business privilege tax, there are, there are times when there are specific legal, uh, requirements that need to be followed, and, um, our finance department director is very, very well versed, versed, sorry, in these matters. Um, but, you know, it's good to have a solicitor to bounce these, uh, these concepts and, and questions off of. So we feel it's, uh, very appropriate to, uh, appoint Mr. Hitchens, uh, who is, who is recommended in the field.
Excellent, very good. Any board comments or questions on this resolution? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, second. Motion is second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And the item seven E, we have a resolution reappointing Keycodes Inspection Agency as an alternate residential building code inspector for Southway Health Township. Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
So, this, this resolution and the next one are to appoint our alternate third-party building inspectors. So, Keycodes was appointed at the reorg meeting as our non-residential. Barry Isidore was appointed as our residential. We typically have an alternate, just in case there's any conflict, so this is the resolutions to appoint the corresponding agencies as the alternates.
Very good. Any board discussion on this resolution? Do I have a motion to approve? I'll second. Any further discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And, and item seven F, resolution reappointing Barry Isidore and Associates as an alternate commercial building code inspector for Southway Health Township. Dave, you've already explained the purpose of this resolution. Is there any board discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then the item seven G, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Health Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving and adopting an updated blanket purchase order listing. I will ask Township Manager Tom Petrucci to present.
Thank you. So the Township purchasing policy requires that the Township Board of Commissioners each year approve the blanket purchase orders. So what those are is, um, the, the, um, uh, sorry, the purchase orders that are rather perfunctory in nature, that the township knows we're going to be using certain vendors, for example, like PPL, MedEd, um, you know, the, uh, the, um, items that, that, that require, uh, constant invoices on a regular basis and so forth, that, and then these vendors will correspond, I'm sorry, the, the purchase orders will correspond with the approximate amounts allocated within the general ledger of the, of the, of the relevant fund. Um, so I would seek a motion to approve these, uh, blanket purchase orders as, as listed.
Very good, thank you, Tom. And our purchasing policy is embedded in this?
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, which was updated last year, so, um, it specifically requires that, that the board approve this, this blanket listing.
Excellent. I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions.
Do we have a lot of blanket cover?
Oh, it, um.
The vendors?
Yes, um, so.
That's.
You, okay. Yeah, we do. Yeah.
Is there a minimum amount or a maximum amount that these will cover?
The amounts are, um, as, as enumerated, and then for anything that is not within this limit, the limit is $2,000 for, as requiring a, a, uh, an actual purchase order. So we, we changed that amount last year. It used to be $500. Um, and now we, we upped it to 2,000, given, given the inflation and the, the increased costs of essentially everything. So when, when you have a purchase order, you have to go through the full procurement requirement, uh, process of obtaining three quotes and so forth, and/or using Co-Stars. So these purchase orders essentially, um, allow us to not have to go through that process because we've already gone through a contractual process. For example, I'm just going to pick one, American Rock Salt. We're on the state contract. We have up to $100,000 allocated for the blanket purchase order. We don't want to have to go through the purchase order process every time we order salt. That's a public safety issue. Um, so we already know, we've already budgeted the amount. We already have a vendor. It's already gone through the process. Same thing with electric. Um, you know, we, the, it's the set amounts that we have to pay.
As long as they stay within the budgeted amount?
Correct. Hmm, we can't, if we do go over the budget, that's when we come back at the end of the year and then, uh, go through a budget amendment process, but we, we've, uh, we've been endeavoring to make that process as streamlined as possible and not, not have to go back on a regular basis.
Do we issue the purchase order numbers?
Yes, we do.
We do. So everybody that goes in would have to have a PO.
In this case, the PO is, um, not sent to the vendors. So like, if we have a new PO purchase, that would get sent to the vendors. They know exactly that it's akin to a contract of sorts. In this case, we don't send it to them. It's more our internal, our internal obligation, right? We're like, we're making sure we're in line with our budget. Um.
So when you purchase rock salt, you, uh, reference that PO?
Correct, and that PO doesn't allow you to purchase the rock salt if it goes above what has been allocated under the blanket purchase order. That's an important part that I, I don't know why I articulated, uh, before that, just then, but, yeah, that, that's especially key to this policy, is that you, the system itself doesn't allow you to cut a check if it, um, goes, goes above the amount.
Are these paid monthly, or how do we pay to, to use purchase order?
I'm sorry, what?
These vendors do not get these POs. This way, they do not know the total amount of money on that PO. So when we call, we give them a PO number, but they won't physically never see this PO.
Whereas if we have a traditional PO, and we go through the process of securing three quotes and so forth, they see that. That's akin to a contractual obligation. For example, um, when we just went through the active transportation plan, we selected Bowman, and the amount was just under $100,000. We went through and had a professional services agreement. A PO was generated with that. They, they see that amount. Um, and it's kind, it's akin to that, that contract number.
One of the listing, um, vendors is one of the local car washes that we use, so to take it down from $100,000 in rock salt to $2,000 for car washes, so it speeds through that process from the township's perspective.
Correct.
To make those smaller purchases that are budgeted.
Right.
I think you use Paul's Hardware quite a bit too, right?
Correct.
Yes, we use Paul's Hardware quite a bit, but I do not carry a PO with Paul's Hardware because most of those purchases are like 50, 60 bucks. Uh, when we do go out for quotes, we do try to stay in the local community for some things, so we will get quotes from them. And if they win with the lowest quote, then yes, we will create a PO to, to Paul's.
Here's another example. We have a streamlined IT agreement with, um, SSI. Now it's called Merplex. It's the same company that, they just changed their name. They bought, bought out, but, um, that's $312,000 in the general funds. We know what, exactly what we're going to be paying in that because it's contractually obligated. Um, so instead of having to go through a new process each time, each, each time we cut a check, it's already under this blanket policy, and it's already under contract. Um, in that case, I believe it was like a three or four-year contract. Um, so, we're, we're operating under the parameters of that contract. We're not deviating from that contract.
Any other comments from the board? Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
I made the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item eight A, we have a motion to appoint two commissioners to the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, if you'd like to give us an overview of that particular committee?
Yes, um, unlike the pension committee, the Budget and Finance Committee is an actual, is not a statutorily required committee. Um, it's not set by ordinance or resolution. Um, it's more of a, um, informal gathering of the Board of Commissioners to, um, work with the Finance Director, the Director of Operations, and the Township Manager to, um, to review the, the, um, ongoing monthly financials, as well as to make strategic recommendations to help the long-term, uh, finances of the township.
Very good, and that committee meets at 9:00 AM?
On Wednesday. But, but that's subject to change. If that doesn't meet the needs of the group, we can change that with, with, um, no notice because it's not a public meeting.
Very good.
Typically the same day as the first board meeting of the month, so we would have met, met this morning at 9:00 AM. But again, if, if, uh, if, if that doesn't work for whoever, who, whomever is appointed, we can, we can be, uh, be, we can be accommodating.
Excellent, very good. So at this point, I'll open it up to the board if there are commissioners who'd be willing to volunteer for this particular committee?
I certainly would. I've served on the committee for a year. Um, thoroughly enjoyed working with the other members of the committee. Um, finance committee's come a long way, um, over the past two or three years, and I would like to continue work on that committee.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a second volunteer for this committee? Okay.
Chris said Wednesday's a bad day.
Yeah, yeah, if they meet on Wednesdays. If it's a Tuesday or Thursday, it's fine with me.
Is everyone in agreement with these appointments?
That's fine, and usually I'm early afternoon on. Mornings are, are awful for me, yeah.
So I need a motion to appoint Commissioners Roth and Johns to the Budget and Finance Committee? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Then the item eight B, motion to appoint two commissioners to the Volunteer Fire Companies Subcommittee. Tom, did you have any comment overview on this one?
I'm, just wanted to note that, again, this, this is not a, a public meeting. It's the meeting where we primarily, uh, discuss operations and equipment needs and so forth of, uh, the fire companies, and, and working with the fire chiefs, the assistant fire chiefs as necessary, as well as myself and the Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, um, to ensure efficient and effective administration of the, uh, the volunteer fire companies.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I'll open it up to the board. I am certainly happy to volunteer on this committee. Again, I've worked with this subcommittee for the last two years and would be happy to fulfill that. Um, but I'll open it up to the board if there's other commissioners who are interested in serving. They meet at 6:00 PM on a Monday, first Monday of the month.
If you, I'll, I'll volunteer.
About if someone else would like to step in. Okay, um, I need a, I will make a motion to appoint Commissioners Kelly and Peichel to the Volunteer Fire Company Subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Then the item eight C, we need a motion to appoint one or two commissioners to the Active Transportation Steering Committee, and I will turn it over to Chris Stroller, our long-range planner, to give us an overview of this committee.
So as, uh, Tom pointed out with the prior two committees, this is also going to be a, um, temporary informal committee. Um, we have later on the agenda direction discussion or, um, just as an update to the Active Transportation Plan, Safety, Active Transportation Safety Action Plan. Last month, we discussed this plan a little bit, um, and since then, as Tom mentioned earlier, we have, um, awarded a contract to Bowman Consulting Group to help us with the preparation of this plan. The purpose of this steering committee is to serve as the kind of guiding sounding board for the development of this plan, developed by staff and with this, uh, consulting team. Um, these meetings are, uh, the informal non-public meetings. This is, um, similar to, uh, some other meetings that we've done in the past for projects, um, parking recreation projects and so forth. Um, there, I want to note that there will be plenty of opportunity for, um, public engagement on this. We hope that all commissioners can be involved in this project. What we're looking for is really just one or two, um, to serve as the, um, representative for the Board of Commissioners. One of the things with this, uh, steering committee, as you can see, and we can certainly talk about it more later in the agenda, um, the, we've identified the need to have a very robust steering committee for these two items, active transportation planning and safety transportation planning. One of the things we'll be exploring in this plan is the idea of, um, uh, really this Vision Zero concept, which is beyond just the township's capacity and what we can do is, uh, with our roadways. It involves a lot of other, uh, partners and stakeholders. Certainly, the, um, healthcare providers, um, our public safety folks have a huge role in this. So it's a broader steering committee, um, for the purpose of this plan that we're embarking on over the next several months. And we, to kind of help manage it as well, we want to make sure that we're getting representatives to keep the direction of this plan going. And throughout the engagement process, we hope that everyone can still get involved and help us in the, um, uh, your ideas for this. So we're really just looking for one or two people to serve on this committee, and we will certainly, um, uh, keep everyone informed as we move through other pieces of engagement, and probably continue to update the board, uh, at these meetings for, um, the progress of this plan, which we anticipate will happen over the next nine months.
Excellent, thank you. Um, thank you for including the list of organizations that will be participating on the steering committee. It's a very diverse and impressive list, um, very inclusive.
Yeah, one of the things I'll, I'll mention, so, uh, we have the idea with the, the kind of joint plan here, it's the Active Transportation Safety Action Plan. The active transportation component is funded by the, um, PA Walkworks Program. Um, and I've worked with the Walkworks Coordinator to help develop this list, um, and they're very happy and impressive with our, um, kind of robust, diverse list of different needs, again, to kind of address the, uh, the different needs of active transportation. And, um, another, uh, important note, not grant-funded, but the, um, idea of this plan being eligible for, uh, federal funding in the future through the, uh, Federal Highway Safe Streets for All Program. And another thing that they like to see is the kind of, uh, development of this type of plan with a very diverse, robust steering committee, looking at providing, um, all voices into, how we're looking at safety of our roadways and, uh, access to our, uh, transportation network. we're looking at safety of our roadways and access to our transportation network for all of our residents and users, employees, so forth.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. I'll open it up to the board. If there are one or two members who are interested in working with this steering committee?
When do you plan to meet?
The first meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, actually. I'm sorry. And we haven't set the next meetings yet. It's one of the things we'll talk about tomorrow. I think we're looking at maybe three meetings for the steering committee. I will note that Commissioner Peichel, I'm sure there's a lot of interest there from the public safety perspective. I think we will probably, we've looked at maybe having kind of a more key stakeholder group specifically on public safety and some of these components that we want to get a lot more robust focus on specifically that topic. I mentioned that if that's of interest to you, but the specific steering committee, we haven't fully set them, but it seems like Thursday afternoon is the first meeting tomorrow. That might be moving forward the, the general time we meet, but we're really only looking to meet maybe three times throughout the course of this project.
Are these in-person and virtual meetings?
We're leaning towards in-person. We really want to have these, this group feel very intimate, connected together. Again, these are very loose meetings, kind of checking in on the progress that we're making as staff and with the consultant. We want this to be kind of the first sounding board before we go forward with the public meetings, which will be hybrid, both in-person and virtual, to get as much engagement as we can. And then obviously, as we get closer to the development of the plan, that will be a lot more structured and that will certainly be shared in a hybrid meeting, either at the Board of Commissioners or the meeting, or if that's a special workshop meeting, we can certainly do that.
Very good. So again, are there commissioners interested in serving on the steering committee?
No. Well, I guess we both would.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have Commissioner Hodges and Peichel. Remaining board, okay with these appointments? Okay, so I will make a motion to appoint Commissioner Hodges and Commissioner Peichel to the Active Transportation Steering Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you to all the commissioners for your willingness to serve on these various committees. They're an important part of the township. So thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight, D, we have a motion to proceed with the purchase of a Freightliner triaxle, including outfit to vehicle in the amount of $239,424. Our Director of Operations, Herb Bender.
Thank you. Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of a Freightliner triaxle in the amount of $163,589, as well as the outfit of the vehicle from E M Kutz in the amount of $75,835, for a total of $239,424. Public Works solicited three quotes for the cabin chassis portion of this truck and solicited three quotes for the outfit portion of this truck. Both the cabin chassis and the outfit is CoStar's pricing. The triaxle would be replacing a 2009 International Single-Axle Dump Truck with 110,000 miles on. The current single axle can only haul nine tons compared to the triaxle being able to haul 22 tons at a time. We did make sure that the larger truck will be able to fit in areas for snow plowing and salting operations also. Action we are requesting is a mo, a motion by the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase of a Freightliner triaxle with the outfit for the total of $239,424. This was budgeted in the amount of $250,000 in the State Highway A Liquid Fuels account.
Thank you, Herb. I have a simple question. Is this truck replacing one that needs to, is not operational anymore?
Yes, this truck is starting to nickel and dime us. Last year alone, the head gasket blew on the engine. There was another part of the exhaust that spilled, the engine spilled the oil into that all had to be replaced. Also, there is rusting issues on this truck also.
And will we sell this old one at auction?
Yes, this will go on municipal bid then.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the board for comments or questions.
When's this new one going to service then? When will it go into service?
If this gets approved tonight, this will be a second quarter build for this truck. So we will probably see arrival end of September.
Near year.
Early October. Yes.
Okay.
Barring there's no delays.
Right.
So.
And the prices will hold? They won't?
Yes, once we, if this gets approved tonight, once we sign those, long as there's no surcharges, like we had to deal with last year's new truck, the price could go up a little, not a lot of money. So if that does happen, like we did last time, we will definitely bring it back to the board, but everyone will try to hold their prices. When I did double check, you'll see in the packet, the dates on these quotes are very new, just from last week, and they did not go up at all from when we got these in like September, August timeframe, when we were working on the budget numbers for these trucks.
Thank you for attaching all those, the bids, so we can compare that. It's always very helpful to have that. And nice to know that the vehicle will be used in different capacities as well. And again, under budget, you know? Thank you.
Yes, the one main reason we wanted to swap the single out axle out into a triaxle, that will actually help us when we're black topping to eliminate two drivers. Instead of only hauling eight ton in a single axle that this truck currently hauls, we have to put three of those trucks on the road to get 24 ton back. But now we can go to one truck to get 22 ton back. So it'll help speed up our process and cut costs even more on that.
Very good. Any further comment from the board? Do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
I moved.
Motion is second. No further discussion from the board? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Then the item eight, E, we have a motion to authorize Township Solicitor to prepare an amendment to the Improvements Agreement to Eck Road and Crackers Port Road. Turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
Yes, so this is a, looking to extend the Improvements Agreement for the Crackers Port and Eck Road warehouses. They were here last year about the same time. Looking for a one-year extension. There is a list from the Township Engineer, an updated list of where they are with the project. The big remaining items are the Norfolk Southern work and then the Chapmans and Eck Road intersection work. Anytime you're working with Norfolk Southern, it's going to take a while. And then we recently received the H O P for the Chapman and Eck Road. There were some issues getting the right easements and the right, right of way for that part of it. Everything looks ready to go for the spring. So we're in favor of an extension. I believe the developers here, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
I would like to just ask our Township Engineer, there's an inspection status update included in our packet. Could you just review the outstanding items for the boards?
Again, the items in this packet are minor nature. There's some cleanup curves that got replaced, manhole cover. Again, the big items that are listed is all the improvements on the Pendon H O P, which is the Chapman's and Exa intersection. We have listed the Norfolk Southern paving, so they received their H O P within a week ago, which is great. They have, at the end of last year, received the Norfolk Southern sign off and have all the agreements done for that. Remaining items, all sort of things that can be done within the next year. It should be much quicker, hopefully, the, once April hits, if the weather is good, you can knock these things out, especially if they have a crew doing the H O P work. It should, should all be knocked out very quickly, hopefully.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board if there are any comments or questions.
So what's the, are you the developer? I take it? So.
Sir, if you would please come to the microphone and turn the microphone on. This is a virtual meeting as well, so the people who are listening virtually will be able to hear you.
So what does the, from October, end of October till now do for you? Why do we have to make it a year?
We don't have to make it a year. I think last year we had put it out as a year because we were waiting for Pendon Norfolk Southern. I, I think now the biggest variables are weather breaking and then availability of materials for the H O P work, which Tony had just mentioned, we got a permit last Tuesday. It's out to bid now. I'll have a very good idea of lead times, you know, leading up to that, but the actual work, as he said, is only a couple of weeks to get it done.
I'd, I'd just like to see this get done and move on, as you do too, but.
Yeah.
You know, maybe a little incentive is to get it done at the end of October versus.
I'm, I'm open to end of October. You know, frankly, our N P D S permit, I think, is set to expire in September, which is, which correlates with the H O P work as well. So September, October, you know, I, we want to be out there as soon as possible and look to start in the spring as soon as the weather breaks.
Is there anything preventing you from starting immediately in the spring? Because this has gone on a long time.
Totally agree. And again, the getting issues before were permits and a third-party approvals, which when we finally got them placed, we're too close to the end of the paving and, you know, cold weather work, which since these are like roadwork type things, we couldn't start then. So now, I really don't see any reason why, but we should be, not be able to complete it.
Okay, thank you.
My only question would be, if we grant you a one-year extension or a nine-month extension, would you be willing to come back and provide us an update after six months? In case for some reason, progress hasn't been made, you'd be able to come back and explain why that one?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, Township staff, we're in communication, I'd say, weekly. So they're up to speed too, but happy to report back to the board.
Are there any other board comments at this time? Do I have a motion to approve said motion?
I'll make a motion to extend it, make an extension till October 31st, 2024.
Okay, and I would add to that, if you're agreeable, to come back to the board at the first meeting in July, be six months for an update.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I would second that.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion of the board? Any public comment? Yes, sir. If you please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. I didn't hear any mention about the flooding on my property. Let me start with page 219 of your packet indicates that a manhole cover was ordered in November of 2023, but this inspection report was from November of 2022. Why did it take them a year to order a manhole cover? That manhole cover is a, a safety device for our Public Works and any other person that has to go into the sanitary system, and they think it's a stormwater system. It, mind boggling, and I hope they ordered more than one because there's more than one problem out there with manhole covers. Page 222, it states the Eck Road concerns will be handled outside of the M P C process. And the, the, the concerns are significant on my part, and they are a part of the M P C process and Township Ordinance compliance under Stormwater Management, Article Three, Stormwater Management Standards, subsection 296-11F. Quote, "Stormwater flows onto adjacent properties shall not be created, increased, or otherwise altered without written notification to an adjacent property owner." You're all aware of the flooding issues. I have a whole YouTube channel dedicated to it. It seems pretty cut and dry. It's a Township Ordinance that's being violated by the developer, and it hasn't been addressed. I've endured enough for this to be prolonged any longer, and I appreciate the shorter duration than another year. I, I would have preferred four months or six months, but I'm glad you're, you're asking them to come back in July to give a status report update. The ongoing impacts and insurance copays and everything, the damage that has been done by flooding of my home, which never flooded between 1961 and 2019, 58 years. And the garage built in 1986 never had water enter the garage through the sill where you drive in or the foundational basement. It's all occurred with the construction of these warehouses and the realignment of Eck Road. So far, this has cost me $91,827.34. That's outside of what, this is actual money that I've paid. And it, it's just mind boggling that a resident has to go through this. I mean, you're all pretty much aware of the ongoing. I know President Kelly has been on the board the longest, and she's heard me speak relentlessly on this topic. And it, it, it just seems like I don't matter, and I don't. My problems are of no concern to them. I, I was tied to Norfolk Southern, and then I was removed, but then asphalt plant shut down, they came up with a plan, I asked it for it to be engineered and stamped, and then they said, you keep asking for this stuff. Let me be clear, concise, and to the point. I'm asking for the flooding of my property by the realignment of Eck Road to stop. More than the money, this has a human toll. This has a personal toll. Let me give you two examples. In 2020, the Township issued blasting permits to the developer, and there was no warning to neighbors, no notice of when the blasting was going to be occurring. Not only did that dynamite cause structural damage to my home, let's talk about people. When that dynamite shook the area, my mother was living at our home with Alzheimer's. Do you know what that explosion can do to trigger an Alzheimer's patient? The panic and the trauma? We don't matter as neighbors, and they've shown it time and time again. She ran into the woods, South Wild Police were able to help me get her back to this. And they did the Project Lifesaver, and I want to thank the Police Department for that device. December 15th of 2023, my mother died. What was I doing? A day and a half later, instead of grieving and handling funeral arrangements, I was in the basement of my garage and my home, running some pumps and making sure they kept running. When your covered Bridge Park was closed, it was a significant storm. Lack of action and, and resolution of these problems are covered by ordinance. They should be covered. I shouldn't be here. It should have been handled. I don't know what went wrong with the design of the road or the realignment, or you look at my driveway, you can tell where the water's going to go. It's, I'm no engineer, but it's pretty easy to see. These are the things that inaction can cause. I'm glad you're not giving them another year, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Height, for sharing your concerns. Ask Tom if you have any comment from the township's perspective, given the topics that's raised tonight.
Yes, the township is working with the developer and their engineer and, and Mr. Height to, to resolve the issues identified by Mr. Height this evening. So we have received plans. They need to be amended, and then we will review them and then, and then hopefully come to a resolution.
Mr. Perchutri, have you received an email from Jacob from Langin Engineering that we discussed earlier last week?
Yes, today we received an email indicating that they had not submitted revised plans. However, we did indicate that the, there's, there's an issue with the one, with the plans, so that, that the corrections will be made, so that they can be reviewed with you. As we discussed, that we, you will need to review them in order to have an easement agreement established.
I will incur more costs by having my legal and engineering teams look at that. I also want to make the township aware that the township has solved these problems before in other parts of the township. On Huckleberry Road, they paved Huckleberry Road, they caused a flooding concern in a driveway. It's in the minutes of the 2009. It's in the minutes of the two thousand nine. I can provide them to all the Commissioners. And they paved sixty feet outside of the right-of-way. These problems, a lot of it was, they repaved Banco Beverages driveway on Eck Road, sixty feet past the right-of-way without a permit. I'm asking for less than that to regrade and take out the depression. I'm going to end up with stormwater facilities on my property. There's already, and Mr. Bender is aware of it, they built curb and stormwater facilities on my private property without my permission, and then they told me after. I only scratched the surface of my little, I'm too emotional, and it's devastating. So I appreciate Tom and Herb have been only ones keeping me from putting a gun in my mouth after all this, because Herb has been at my house, Herb and Tom had both been at my house at ten o'clock at night on a Sunday or Saturday, I forget when it was, to witness the flooding. And so I shouldn't say anymore. Thank you.
Well, I'm certainly very sorry to hear all of this, Mr. Height. I want to thank staff for working with you and being with you at your home, and I would ask you to please continue to stay in touch with staff so that we can remediate and get this wrapped up. Is there any further public comment at this time? No other board comment? So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this motion to extend the improvements to October 31st with an update to the Board of Commissioners at the first meeting in July. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine A, Boards and Commissions, informational items and vacancies. Tom, if you would review.
Thank you. So upcoming meetings, with all details to be posted on the website, are as follows. Monday, January twenty-second, ten a.m., Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, ten a.m., Pension Committee. Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, seven p.m., Zoning Hearing Board. Monday, February fifth, seven p.m., Public Safety Commission. And Wednesday, February seventh, seven p.m., Board of Commissioners. All meetings will be held here at the Township Building, and virtual participation is where noted on the website.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten A, for direction and discussion, we have Partnership for the Delta, I'm sorry, Delaware Estuary Farm Forward Group Meeting. Alaskar Long Range Planner, Chris Stroll, please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. The Partnership for the Delaware Estuary is a nonprofit that has reached out to the Township recently. This nonprofit works on, well, one of the projects that they do is they work on the development of these collaboratives focused on water quality preservation, and they have been working in the Schuylkill River watershed for decades now, and they have a very successful program there where they work with a number of municipal nonprofit, public and private partners, to address a couple of the items that I've listed in the memo here. They are expanding upon this successful collaborative program in the Schuylkill River watershed to the Delaware River watershed. They are looking for meeting space to actually host one of their kind of subgroup meetings that is focused on agricultural, agricultural work related to water quality preservation. The Partnership was impressed with the work that the Township has been doing as part of our South Whitehall Landscapes Plan, focusing on natural resource preservation and agricultural preservation, and noted the agricultural group that we had here last summer to speak. They felt like, also, this is a very convenient location for their in-person meeting, that it pulls in partners all across Philadelphia up to the northern part of Pennsylvania. This is really just an update for the board. They are looking to host their meeting. This is really just their working group. It's not really a public meeting. It's kind of an open-door policy, though it's on January twenty-third from nine-thirty until two p.m. So they'll be here in the meeting room over there, having their working meeting. It's an opportunity for us as staff to kind of poke our heads in, get involved, and sort of see what they're doing, see if there is an opportunity for us to get more involved, evaluate specifically what this agricultural working group is doing, and see if there's any benefits to us as a municipality to get more involved. But really, they're just sort of looking for meeting space and felt like we were an amenable township to the work that they're doing, and it's a great meeting space in this beautiful building, and it's centrally located.
Sounds like a fantastic opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. We were honored that they reached out to us.
Excellent. Is there any board comment on this special item?
I'm hoping we can all get involved and work together, because there's been recent articles about how our water here in the Lehigh Valley has been contaminated and has those forever contaminants. So I'm hoping a collaboration and something really good can come from this.
Yeah, I think as staff, we're definitely going to poke our heads in and kind of see what they're doing. I know in some conversations with the Director of this program, I think they're really starting off more, I think the purpose of this meeting is to see how they can develop better public outreach to landowners and other groups that they need to be involved in. I think they're kind of developing a work plan, so maybe to see the direction of where that work plan goes, certainly something for us to figure out if there's a role for us there in a way that we can kind of benefit from this group being aware of South Whitehall now to how we can partner better.
No further discussion? Good luck with that meeting, and it sounds very exciting. Keep us updated.
Will, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten B, County Radio Project. I'll turn it over to our Police Chief for an update.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This will be a very brief kind of twenty-five thousand-foot range, just to keep you updated. I know the last several years, we've been working with the county about upgrading the emergency radio system in the county. In June, there was an R F P put out in which four vendors actually returned. At this point in time, everything is still kind of in the legal phase. They're reviewing, they've reviewed those four, there's been thousands of pages of documents. An intent to award was issued on December eighteenth by the county, in which legal from procurement in the county, as well as the vendor, are working to iron out all the details of that contract, and at this point in time, they don't want to release any of that information. But hopefully, within the next six weeks or so, and everything is ironed out with them, it will go in front of the Board of Commissioners in Lehigh County to award that contract with about an eighteen to twenty-four month implementation phase. So there's been a lot of work done into it. I'm pretty confident that the system they've chosen will meet the needs of the county of all emergency services, and I think we'll be on a good track moving forward. So the updates will come, but as of this time, the county doesn't want to release any of those details with names or specifics or amounts until all that legal back-and-forth has taken place with the county as well as the vendor. So, but we are on a good pace. I know this is something that all of emergency services have been pushing for, for quite some time, and now with the lead from Rick Malchany to really push this forward, I believe we're going to get there. It's, the end is near, and we'll have a very good product for public safety.
Excellent. Thank you for updating the board. Thank you for your involvement with that Steering Committee, and please keep us posted. Are there any questions?
Tom, can you just put this on the radar? At public safety, we talked about our larger warehouses having some sort of amplification to make sure all emergency responders was kind of pushed back because of the radio project. But at some point, we're probably going to have to notify those large warehouses that they're going to have to invest some money in their infrastructure so our emergency services can get out from inside their buildings.
Yeah, and staff, we've internally already discussed that. Thank you. We'll say, I'll just add that now that we have that about two-year build-out period, and we know what it will be, we'll have that buffer zone to make those notifications, so it's not a, hey, we need this tomorrow, but they'll have about eighteen months to get that done. So I think it's, it's fair for our businesses, as well as I think we'll have it in place by the time we're up and running.
Good news, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Peichel. Any other discussion on this? Moving on to Ten C, Active Transportation Safety Action Plan Steering Committee. Chris, I know you've already touched on a good amount of that. Do you have anything to add at this?
No, we talked about it earlier. I'd look forward to Commissioner Hodges, Commissioner Peichel getting involved in the Steering Committee. Thank you for your participation in that. Just to note that, really for the public, that after this first Steering Committee meeting, we'll be getting more word out there to the public about this plan, start to schedule the public meetings and engagement sessions. We are really looking to get a lot of people and residents involved in this. We'll be looking at some public surveys and opportunities for people to kind of help weigh in on what are the needs of different types of transportation in the Township. How do we create safer roadways? And just a final thing to note, we're excited about this Steering Committee. I have heard a lot of great feedback from specifically the Walk Works program about our approach to this project, really combining the Active Transportation Plan and the Safety Action Plan. I think they're really kind of keeping an eye on our project and hopefully using this as a model for other municipalities moving forward. So the pressure is on for a good product here, but excited to really kick this off and appreciate everyone's participation.
Excellent, thank you, Chris. We have no old business this evening. Agenda Item Twelve, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone this evening who'd like to address the board? Or anyone online, Dave? Hearing and seeing none. Agenda Item Thirteen, our department reports, they have been included in our packet for the board to review. We will not go over them publicly this evening. They are available for the public to review. There are thirteen departments, Executive, Community Development, Finance, Fire, Human Resources, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, Public Works, and Township Engineer. These are thirteen quarterly reports that I want to thank each department head for submitting for the board's review and for the public. I want you to please thank all of the members and your teams. It's again, another opportunity to understand the different components in this Township to deliver services and work to make this Township great, so I want to thank all of you. And I encourage the public to please take a look on the website and read some of this information. It's actually amazing, the work that's done here. So thank you all. Agenda Item Fourteen, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
Submove.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session scheduled this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.